...that we might use to generate utility rates for the Stormwater Program. So, we're going to put that presentation aside and do it at another day.
Sure.
Is all right with y'all?
Yeah.
And then, we're going to go ahead and proceed with this one, which is the CIP Program. This one's a little bit more time sensitive. So, last couple of years, we haven't sold any of the remaining authorization on the GO bonds due to the economic circumstances. We're in a little bit different position, we believe, this year. So, the question that's going to be asked at the end is, do you want to go ahead and tend to proceed with the bond sale this spring, possibly next year as well, to deal with some of the indoor projects that are out there. I'm going to recap, first of all, the 2003 authorization. This is the vote that was held in 2003 on Proposition 1, 2, and 3, shown up there on the slide. You can see Proposition 1 was the biggest one, primarily for streets. We had two smaller ones, one for the JO, which has been sold and completed, and 3, which was the public training, public safety training facility off of Keely that has not been sold. We'll see as we get along, it's one of the proposed projects for this next bond sale. Total authorization, sixty-eight point seven eight. We've got about twenty-three point four seven of that authorization done, or remaining, which means we've issued the rest. That twenty-three point four seven is made up of the one point three four for the training center, and the rest is all streets. This is a recap of the authority used and what it's been used for. See, the issuances were done in 2004 through 2009. They were suspended in 2010 and 2011 due to the circumstances, so we haven't issued anything since 2009. See, a wide variety of street projects under, you can see the JO down here. Various subdivisions like Westwood Estates, Westlake Park, Serendipity, those evolving in parts of Green. Westwood Estates is the second phase that's coming up. This is our project recap. These are the projects that were actually advertised to owners as to ones that we were basing the bond program on. These are the ones that we intended to get done. You can see the status of these. Valley Ridge is done from Garden Ridge to West City Limits. Westlake Park is completed. Serendipity Village is completed. In North Old Town, we designed Richardson Street, then suspended it, moved money to Purnell, which is under construction today, as you can see, outside of a couple blocks in south. About $2 million unsold in that line item. Various things have been done under miscellaneous economic development, multi-developed streets, Valley Ridge from 121 to Railroad Park, Windhaven out on the east side, out by Austin Ranch and Bright. Those are all complete. Westwood Estates is completed in Section 2. Section 1 is going to be bid in just a couple of months here, so you'll see that coming to you on an agenda fairly quickly. We added Bel Air Heights in 2011, and I believe that's under construction as well. I-35 Bridges, we haven't done anything on that. Had original line item of $6 million of authorization, so that's kind of out there for future consideration. Fox Avenue was completed, but we didn't have to do anything on this one in terms of financing ourselves. This was under the DCTA, not your name, the program, but...
Whatever.
Yeah, their version of...
ELA?
ELA, thank you, thank you. Valley 2, we had an original line of about $4 million. We did a lot of rehab in 2003, and so we kind of set that one aside. Maybe something we revisit, because 2003 is quite a while ago now, almost 10 years, believe it or not. Continue to take a look at those older subdivisions on those year-to-year basis. This is Public Safety Training Center. This is off of Keely. It's an addition to the existing training tower. Actually, it's an addition to the existing training facility over there, of which the training tower is part. Primarily additional classrooms, shower space, dirty shower facilities for firefighters. There's not a whole lot of money there, but something that they've been planning on for some time. Southwest Lewisville, Spinks Road, Valley Parkway, those were all completed, but again, we managed to avoid having to do anything ourselves, because we worked with Denton County and the owners to put those roads in at their cost. East Old Town, this is a line of about $5.5 million for the triangle area bounded by 121 and Keely and roughly probably Purnell Street. Most of the streets there are actually in pretty good condition due to CDGT expenditures. There's never really been a defined scope for what we would do in East Old Town. There's just kind of a line set aside for that area. South Old Town, somewhat similar, very small line. Again, no real defined scope for exactly where or what would be done. And Corporate Drive, the Waters Ridge to Railroad Street piece, that little connection is in design. We also got a secondary road rail crossing in design further to the east at Windhaven, where it crosses the railroad over by Castle Hills. These are actually going to wind up being funded by the regional toll revenue funds that have been allocated to us, although we'll have to provide a match in combination with Denton County. It's a 20% match. Denton County will do 10, we'll do 10. Miscellaneous Streets, variety in here. Railroad Streets under construction. We had some delays there with contractor problems. Valley Ridge, Mill to College. That one's in design and in the process of right-of-way acquisition. This would be the connection between Mill Street and College into the vicinity of the landfill that would basically connect Valley Ridge all the way from the Flowermanon City to the limits on the west to Railroad Park and 340. That's going to be a joint project also with Denton County, but we'll need a match for construction. Another part that we may use some of this money for would be for Plaza Health and Construction and the Plaza Project. So, what are our immediate needs? Really, these three projects would be the ones that we would be focused on, because this one's in design, in right-of-way acquisition, very close to being ready to go out to bid on, close to being within a year. We need about $7 million for our share of that. County will provide the remaining funds, but we'll need about $7 million for our piece. Five, I believe, that's all. This is the training center aforementioned, and 407 is the aesthetic and streetscape improvement that we recently discussed in workshop. That one in the states...
Does it stand still for them to build the 407 structure and all, till they come to full build out of the...
Whatever they build out of 35, correct.
They haven't talked about scaling that back yet.
Yeah.
1.6 to the 35 intersection.
That's what I like about you, you're a half-full kind of guy. So, that comes to 9.94 million. So, what's our bond capacity, which, again, in the last couple of years, we've been a little shot of issuing bond because of the effect on the debt rate and in an environment where taxable assessed value might be going down, which in fact it did. So, it's a good thing that we held off. We managed to basically absorb that decrease without any real substantive effects on tax rates for systems or on operations. It's one of those things you do. You look at the environment, you see whether or not you think you can absorb the increase in debt service according to your taxable assessed value growth. If you can, you have to deal with the debt rate increase or make a decision to not issue the debt. So, this is based on First Southwest. It's our financial advisor. They've done capacity analysis based on zero growth, assuming zero growth in AV compared to 2010, 11 budget we're in right now. They think we could issue 6.03 million in 2012, 4.02 in 2013, and that gets you to So, what's the risk? Well, your taxable assessed value could actually decrease. I'm not going to guarantee that it's going to be flat. Flat seems like a relatively conservative scenario, but I can't predict the economy and I can't predict the appraisal district. Maybe Rudy can. I can't.
The word now is flat to down.
Yeah.
Even with no construction.
Okay.
Because every time, when a partner comes online, another one's losing tons, because the capacity's getting bigger and bigger.
Value goes down there.
Right.
That's certainly a possibility. So, again, I have to mention that as a risk. If it goes down, then basically, if you issue the debt based on it being the same, you wind up having to absorb that increased debt through a change in your debt rate and upward change in your debt rate. It's that, or you could possibly increase the debt rate, or transfer funds, that should be "or" right there, it says "on", but it should be "or", transfer funds from general fund reserves to the debt service fund to offset. That would give you a little flexibility to deal with that change in the short run. You don't want to do that on a long-term basis, but it could give you some flexibility in the short run. Or, and this is what we've actually done the last two years, we've had to evaluate our debt service fund reserves and drawn them down to offset those changes in the debt rate. We've done that each of the last two years. We're at the point now where we don't think that there's a whole lot of room in this option to play with that, especially if you issue some more, then that fund reserve will go up, and there's not going to be excess reserves there for much of it. They're all down. So, you're probable, most likely options are either just plain old increased debt rate or transfer funds from general fund reserves. What we don't want you to do is to keep the debt rate the same and balance it off the operating rate, because then I have to do a whole lot of stuff out of the operating Other projects... That says other projects, but they're now... That's throwing me off, I'm sorry. It's supposed to be other options. You could advance these funds, instead of issuing debt, you could advance these funds through the use of general fund reserves and use of reimbursement resolutions to pay yourself back in the future through a future debt issuance. We've done this in the past as well. A most recent example was Railroad Street. Didn't have the bond capacity at the time. We financed it out of general fund, passed a reimbursement resolution, and then paid ourselves back a couple of years later through debt issuance. So, it's kind of a way of balancing the cash flow and project need over a period of a couple of years. Problem with this is that you've got to make that repayment within, I think it's two or is it three? Two, two years of the initial expenditure. So, if you don't make yourself a repayment within that timeframe, you're out of luck and your general fund reserves are capped.
So, do you have to make it all within two years or do you have to get it to...
You have to make it all.
What could jeopardize that, you mean?
Not being able to issue, not being able to issue the debt. Yeah. Continued deterioration in your tax base, where you don't feel comfortable in issuing that to repay yourself. Of course, along with that, you have to have the ability to do it out of the general fund reserves in the first place. So, here's what your ending fiscal year 10, 11 general fund reserves look like. This is un-audited, but getting pretty close to being audited. Twenty point one one five million, so you've got some capacity.
Did it come out of that?
Yeah, yeah. And that's the other obvious purpose for these funds, is for things that you have to do, like the dog park, before it's unfunded in any other manner.
Some of the animal shelter.
What did it say?
Dog park.
Oh, I meant animal shelter.
Well, that's what I was thinking, because I didn't think, when we took that $5 million out of our costs, out of reserve, pay for the animal adoption.
Yes, you didn't.
But I didn't think at the time, we did $25 million.
Well, you might not have, because that was a couple of years ago.
Twenty-two million. So, in other words, we increased, if I'm going to do this, the last couple of years, we increased, we increased our reserve by about $3 million.
You built, you started building it back, yes.
Well, similarly, if we hadn't taken the $5 out for the dog, we'd have about $28 million.
Now, you'd take about $25 million. Yeah, if you didn't spend $5, you had $5 more to spend, 20 plus $5. So, that's the situation.
But we would have had, we would have had $28, because we had $23, and then we took it down to $8.
There's a couple of other new projects. It's a bit insurance and credit. That's true. We've talked about some other capital project intensive plans, especially today, will be Park Plan, and I wanted to give you some feel for where we're at on the 4B Fund, because that's a source of funding for Park associated with capital projects. The problem with that plan is going to be financing, quite obviously, and it may wind up being that your only option is to ask the brokers if they're willing to move forward with that project on the basis of debt financing. But, for now, what can you do out of 4B Fund? This shows your revenues the past couple of years. We've actually got pretty stable revenues despite the economic circumstances. We budgeted a little bit of an increase in 2012 based on what we got last year. Revenues are primarily the sales tax, but then we also throw in some pool facility revenues.
How much is sales tax? Are the adjustments that are made down the road, I don't know if they're bigger, or they just seem to happen more frequently, where they adjust previous payments that were made?
Where this controller finds errors? Yeah, there's a lot more of those than there used to be.
Okay.
And they're beginning to be a big problem.
Yeah.
Because here's the rule, if the controller makes a mistake and it winds up hurting you, you have to pay some money back because it came to you in the error. You just pay it back.
Right.
You've already spent it in most cases, but then you have...
How much time is there to pay?
They can go back on the five years.
I mean, what do you mean?
But you have to pay it pretty quick.
And if it's under a certain amount, they just take it out of your next payment?
Well, what they did when we had to issue for the franchise store, they hit all the cities with the total amount. Some of the cities went back and negotiated.
They just offset your revenue unless you want to come up with the money yourself.
But I mean, if it was more than what you've got, would they take all of your money?
They would. They went back and negotiated with a couple of cities.
Of course, you could be on the good side of that, too. Doesn't have to be bad. You might get some revenue along to some local city.
Yeah, really, that's what happens with Grand Prairie. It happened reverse. They got all that money from all the other cities.
Yeah.
Of course, they do.
Here's your operating...
Wait a minute, wait a minute, go back one. You know, since we had the, since we had the Park Plan, you know, you talk about cities are starting to increase their fees for revenue to help support, and I think we're doing this, but I was thinking that, are we looking at our pools, facility revenues to try to help do that or not? I was thinking we did on the pools.
When we switched over, when we switched over.
We did the pool rates. We actually lowered it. Y'all were very hesitant to charge what it cost.
Yep. Could we possibly...
Y'all, y'all. The council at the time...
Let me ask you this, would council be interested in having staff...
Wins.
Would council be interested in having staff put together some information to see what had increased in some fees for those type of services, how that would benefit us in providing newer, better services, additional services?
They won't really do that. It would help offset existing operating expenses.
Well, it's going to have to some, because if we're collecting $10 now, as cost is 20, then we're having a supplement, right?
Always supplement.
If we're supplementing, but if we collect 20, it is cost of 20. We don't have to supplement anymore, supplement anymore, so we still got that $10.
So, do you have to keep it?
That's what I'm saying.
The general fund, the tendency is to not do that.
But if you're... That's fine, I'm just trying to figure out a way to, you saw the need that we're going to have for the staff. Would y'all want to look at it?
I think we need to look at it to be competitive on the, on the charging.
Just to see, and I'm not saying we do it, just have them get some information together and see what...
Worst-case scenario, residents know what added value they're getting. You can always look at the pool rates.
I would say the same thing for everything.
It's not a big level.
Correct.
Yeah. We do actually look at that. But also, also, you know, is it something that the city should pay? We're not going to start charging for someone to go to free park, but it costs this money to maintain. That is something that cities do.
Yeah.
I'd like to look at... There is a policy question there as to whether or not you charge on a user fee basis some portion of the cost of running a facility. Some places we do it, some places we do it partially, some places we don't do it at all.
I'd like to look at what, you know, what it costs in order to have those revenues covered expenses, but I'd also like to look at what other cities are charging just for similar services, so that we can find out what the market will bear.
Well, the reason I ask if you want to do it, the general, but it's fine. But what I heard, the gentleman, I asked him if they'd had a fall-off in their participation in the city services, and he said, no, in fact, it had actually increased, even with the new increasing of rates, because they were able to provide them with better facilities and better maintenance services. So, if it's, if people are willing to do it and get better stuff, that's what I'm saying.
One say, the conversation came up in the context of building new facility, didn't it?
Well, it did, yeah.
It's one thing to build a new facility and charge something more for it, it's a little different than what exists.
Oh, yes. And I certainly mean that, and I'm not saying we do it first, but I'm saying you could do that if you're jumping with, if you're going to build a new facility. At least then you know you don't have that $10 if you've got to work, continue to supplement your own facilities with.
It's going to be 20 more, like...
Well, whatever, whatever, I was just using, the fair box doesn't pay the way, is that?
So, anyhow, there's the revenues. Here's the operating expenditures that are in the 4B Fund for running Railroad Park and the pool, and a portion of the library. See, it's really relatively smaller portion of the overall budget. We did move it up in 2012 to provide for, which cost the three additional maintenance workers and electricity at Railroad Park. So, what's the rest of it for? Here's your summary, revenues, expenditures, what's left for debt service, and your debt service is going to eat most of the rest of that up. The debt history is 21.2 in 2004 for the library expansion, pools, land for Railroad Park, and designing skate park, and then the rest of it in 2007, 18.18 for the Railroad Park construction. And you can see each issuance here has a certain annual payment.
At some point, when we wanted, if we wanted to go into debt, it would be paid for by 4B. I heard you say something a while ago, it has to have a separate election.
If you want to go, yeah. If you want to have a new project?
Yes.
If you want to have a new project, you have to have a public hearings on that project.
But not another, not an election?
No.
It's just have to spend the money?
Yes.
Goes back to the corporation.
So, here's the debt service on those issuances since 2009. You see, we're still up in the 2.9 range. Got some potential in the 2004 issue coming up here to generate some savings, which we're going to be pursuing with First Southwest. That will help. But today's picture, when you add the debt service in over here, you can see that you don't have a whole lot left in terms of current revenue balance. A variety of transfers, I'm not going to belabor these. Once you do the transfers in the budget this year, again, you just have to even lower current balance. So, really, you don't have much room to add any debt service to that based on our current structure and current revenue numbers. This shows you what's the operating reserve and the designated reserve in the fund, and right now, we're at about $6 million that's budgeted. You'll see an audit number here in the next month or so, when this auditor get done. Probably won't be substantially different from that, maybe a little bit higher. But that's $6 million that you could use for projects, but that's only $6 million. And I think the number was 130, whatever it was.
Can we use that to...
I don't think this is...
You could, you could use that when the bonds become callable, you can actually use whatever resources you had.
Can't pay any debts on the perimeter to save some interest?
You can still owe.
Wow.
Case goes real bad.
You can, you can, you can defees debt, maybe in accordance with whatever those bond covenants and restrictions say when bonds are held.
To me, that's always an option. I would love to see those options in your reports. Thank you very much.
So, and I've said too much here, other than we don't see it changing substantially. And so, your options there are somewhat limited until your revenues in the 4B. Your sales tax revenues probably are starting to build back up.
When does the, talking about the sales tax, when does the extra quarter percentage start? Not because it wants to start...
4B fires and lease, it's already started, I believe, January, didn't it?
It's March 9th, March 9th.
Okay, that's right. You get your first check in June, so it starts...
April 1.
When do businesses start charging the union equipment?
April 1st.
You know what's amazing is how many businesses is...
They're not the same powerpoint.
What's amazing to me is how many businesses are still going and charging 8s right now?
April 4.
They all are now.
Yeah, they all are now.
I wonder if they charge 8th or 4th?
It's April 1.
You know, it goes 8 and a half.
Eight and a quarter is it, is the max?
I'm sorry, how many are not charging the pool 8 right now? That's what we should be.
They all should be, yeah. Let them see that call.
That's what I'm saying. A bunch of them aren't charging, I want to say it's seven and three quarters, or yes, or...
Well, they might not charge the 8.
They have to pay for it. No matter what they charge, what they have to pay.
And that's it. It's just maybe, because it's not what they charge, it's what they got to pay, pay for themselves.
Yeah, they should be charged.
Castle Hills is, you know, that area in Castle Hills is seven and a half.
Right. Now, these are, most of them are fast food places, too. You know, just their computer system, they don't know. That's all it is, that's why there's...
We occasionally get a call on it.
Yeah, we'll call the controller.
Well, it's their problem. They still got to pay, whether they collect it or not, right?
They should pay.
They remit what they collect.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I mean, they remit the dollars. They don't actually do a calculation.
The controller could come back and...
And some of it back into it.
Oh, I see.
It's getting back into it.
So, the only way you can get that money, if they're not collecting, the way you get that money is have to report the calculator, the controller, they'd have to go back and audit them based on sales, and they say, no, you should have paid that.
Right. We do that occasionally, someone will let us know.
We have a sales tax, so...
So, was that due to their filing? They don't put their collections in, you know, their city, your, you know, taxing authority?
They do.
And they got you like it's bad to them?
Yeah, but, you know, some people start with what they collected and then back into it, you know, me and say myself, it's that.
Oh, okay.
There's a lot of different challenges to say.
So, the decision come here is whether do you want to offer our staff to work on First Southwest bond issuance for 2012? This would happen sometime, probably May, probably not earlier than May, possibly June. So, always contingent on the conditions in the market. The market changed substantially.
Made when it would sell?
Would it sell?
No, would it be made when you sell the bond?
Yes, yes.
And there's six million reserves.
You have twenty million in reserves.
The six was the 4B.
Well, we do have that advanced refunding, you know, option. And it would make sense to save money to do the advanced refunding and the new money at the same time.
Just talking about that.
Just on the other part.
Was I in a...
It's on the 4B.
I think we need to look at it and start from May.
I need to get First Southwest building probably no later than what? March?
Yeah.
First part of March?
It takes that month to put it all together and then bring to you. About a month and a half.
So I don't need a decision today, but probably part of that wrap up discussion that we have and then get a firm decision sometime very quick. So unless you have any other questions, that's really all I have.
Are you going to have the programs with it?
The programs?
That you want to do them on, you know?
That's those ones I went over.
Right there for me, then you know, I don't know.
Guess what? That's what I'm thinking. That's that right there.
Right. So when you do, when you do the sale, so what you do is what you bring back to it.
We have to borrow money to do this.
That's what we're talking, yeah, you just kind of stepped out from it.
Yeah, I know, but I need...
The question is whether you want to authorize this issue of debt in the spring for...
So maybe we can use this from anything that's overage somehow else? If we have to? We don't have to spend all that money we get. We can actually apply for this.
You, you have the reserves that you've got here. Use your reserves if you want to. And of course, there's a no build option. There's always the no build option, this stuff I'm doing right now. Or postpone until later, or postpone the project indefinitely. There's a range of no build.
Is that the power of the general fund now that holds fifty million like you're here, you know?
This?
That wasn't fifty million for a year.
What was it for a year?
It was actually closer to the number. He was talking about twenty, twenty. This is the, this is the undesigned reserve.
We took five million for the animal shelter.
Five million, sorry.
This is, this is the undesigned portion. There's also a required reserve portion. That's another ten million bucks, so...
I know we need a required debt.
Yeah, this is not include that required.
Okay, that's what I was...
This is available for you to use, whatever you want to use it. It's totally unrestricted. A good summary of all of the things we've talked about in general fund over the last couple of months would be helpful, too, when we come back to this, because there's thirty-five...
Other things out there?
All the, all the other things on the time horizon that we've talked about, maybe tap a general, the over fund here. Now, some of those we've dealt with. Of the most prominent of those was the fire facility. It was un, we didn't have any sources for that. It was not part of a bond authorization that's coming up. Any way to do that? The sales tax will provide a means for getting that built without any other debt issuance or any other capping of fund reserves. Now, that, that one, that one million there for 407, that doesn't include all the architectural and stuff that we've been talking about with 407 and council. Yeah, that was all about, that was all about, yeah. Okay, and then we...
Interse...
Just for 407. Not thirty-five. Not the rest of thirty-five, just for that one intersection. Okay, so that's covered. Yeah, when we, when we had the workshop, showed all the different treatments out there, that's, that would cover that.
So it's one point four, one point six, around?
One point six. And then we've got the other parts of thirty-five that we need to... Since we set the bar with 407, now we need to, so... And I know there's a couple others we've talked about. Well, you know, you got some other projects. Well, and so one of those things, for example, is there's stuff in South Old Town, there's stuff in North Old Town, and East Old Town essentially. Connect to Castle Hills. The rest of the Windhaven... Rest of Windhaven. Most of that we think will get funded out of the regional toll revenue project, although we'll have a match associated with it. Now, kind of, there's an underlying question. I think, I don't remember if Neil asked you about it, or TJ, or maybe it was even Leroy, but, you know, there's a question about what you use bond funds for in the Old Town area. I do have some, some information on that that you can take with you. Yeah, that stuff was, I think, on my, my request just to kind of get us an idea of what's out there. Okay, thank you. So one of these is a condition index chart that actually comes out of that Spallett state that we talked about earlier on Thursday. It's somewhat dated. Some of those, those ratings come from as far back as 2004 or '05. But it gives you some feel as to the, that right-hand column, that PCI column is a pavement condition index that tells you what the general condition of the roadway is for that segment of the road. And hundred is perfect and one is like not even a road.
Turmoil.
Turmoil or a pathway. So gives you some feel of condition. The second is a map that shows you kind of an inventory of kind of a general Old Town area of what kind of facilities you have out there, whether these are asphalt roads with drainage, asphalt roads with bar drainage, concrete roads, curb, gutter, storm sewer, et cetera. So it kind of touches you what's out there. And as you can see from the map, it's a, it's a pretty good mix. The issue, of course, in Old Town has always been if you're going to do something on any given street, what exactly is it going to be? Because we were dealing with very small rights away, usually forty feet or less in right of way. And you can't build a thirty-eight foot typical city street back, curb, back to back in a forty-foot right of way and have room for sidewalks or utilities. And that's the issue that we dealt with on Richland Street several years ago, when we attempted to put in a standard city street. We did modify the right of way. We did modify the design in that case. And we shrunk down the parkway to within the existing right of ways. And we basically wound up with the curves, with the streets right next to the curves and a thirty-eight foot street. The problem with that is that you still need room for power poles and any kind of appearances that utilities have. And so we can't put those in the middle of the sidewalk for obvious reasons. And so we needed a five-foot easement. And some property owners were willing to do that, and other property owners weren't. And so that, that project kind of has been a nutshell for now.
Well, some of them, not only did that one get even, they didn't want to fill the period.
After they, they wanted to push it. And that's, so that's kind of the common issue, common denominator of anywhere on these substandard Old Town streets is exactly what is it that you want to spend funds on? What is the scope of the project? Do you just basically put back what's there? Do you improve the standard? Do you improve the, the current design characteristics? There are other curb, there are other asphalt streets with bar drainage in the city that function perfectly fine. Something of an aesthetic question, I suppose, more than anything else. There are some parking implications. The wider the street is, the more street, more cars you can put on a parking lane. But that's always the question is what do you put on the ground? And where, how much right of way to function with it? So that's one of those future things that's out there in terms of the apple improvement demands. Most of the other major subdivisions, as you can see from the street cap, we pretty much got them taken care of. Westlake Parks there, Deputy Building, Westwood one and two.
And you know what's amazing? You know what's amazing? If you push back, it's Mr. Perry, those, those additions where we've gone in like Westwood two stuff and redone those streets, those houses in there that just popped up and people taking more pride of their ownership. They're keeping their houses up better. They are, it looks like a new neighborhood. Not a new built neighborhood, but it looks like a totally different neighborhood to the plus side. And it's amazing to see how just the city going in there and redoing those streets or travel where those streets fifty years. Fifty-year old streets, which were in need of repair and stuff. And now, but the citizens have gone in on their own, the private sector has gone in on their own now and started making improvements to their houses, which is, to me, what it's all about.
But basically, that's all I have. Any other questions? Bring this back to you as early as possible. We don't get the wrap-up session scheduled. We'll ask you regular agenda, regular council meeting, what you want to do.
Okay, so is it just the wrap-up?
That's it, except when you all want to do the wrap-up.
Okay, so what I'm saying, what I'm going to say is maybe four o'clock, start workshop session, pay of the council meeting, or a Saturday morning.
Two options.
Eighteenth and twenty-fifth are out for me.
Hold on a second, what? I'm sorry.